How are you doing? Everything you heard about us is true.
Fuck yeah.
My name is Mr. Garrison. And this is Town Council. We are from Denver, Colorado. And we're gonna perform an original long form for you, which is based on the town that we will create before your eyes. First thing we're gonna show you is some of the inhabitants that live in this town. Then we will see a Town Council open forum meeting. And then we will grow and expand the town for you. So first thing I need to know to get started is just a suggestion. And we had fortune cookies in the green room. What's something that you might read on a fortune cookie? Or if you have a fortune cookie or got one recently, what did it say?
Fortune cookie reader, can you?
Or you can just make it up.
You'll read today.
What's your favorite cookie? Alright, give me, then say each piece of advice. Any advice you've ever been given in your entire life. Don't be shy. Don't be a lawyer. Yes! Don't be a lawyer. This is Don't Be A Lawyer Town Council.
So we met in college.
Sure did.
And fifteen years later, I am happily married.
I'm married. Yeah. First fourteen years were good, but last year, I don't know. Sorry.
Yeah, okay, Debbie Downer. So he's a little butt hurt because I got to follow my dream of underwater basket weaving. And he decided to follow his grandpappy's advice.
Yup.
Tell him what you do. Tell him what you do, trust me.
I do accounting.
He does accounting.
Ted, I just do accounting. Numbers. All frickin' day!
Yeah, he, he, he doesn't do it for a company, though.
No.
Or a nonprofit, or for the government. He just does it in the basement for play.
We've got a refrigerator down there. And I've got those magnetic numbers that I had when I was a kid. And I put them up there. And I come up with all these different formulas and something. And it looks really cool, but she makes more money.
Well, you don't understand the basics. The balance sheet has to balance. Your ledgers are all over the place. It's okay.
Threes and eights look so similar.
Yeah, but you know, that's, that's what I love about your dyslexic brain. My poor dyslexic husband, you counted.
It's not easy growing up when your mom is Judge Judy. I mean, she, she never believes me. She loves to say, you know, "Don't pee on my leg and tell me it's raining." She's always getting me with that one. You know, I feel like I can't even breathe. And she carries her gavel around everywhere with her. I'm sorry, Mother.
I don't know. I don't know. If I find it convincing you're, that you're sorry, I might have to... You know what? I'm gonna rule a favor at the plaintiff. I'm gonna need you to give me about five hundred dollars later today.
Yes, Mother. She's been really hard on me because I never, I never became a lawyer like my other four brothers. Ezra. Jebediah. Jacob. And Peter.
That's right, Persephone.
She wanted a girl. So she gave me a girl's name.
I don't see, if you fulfill all of the legal requirements of me having had a girl, I don't see what the problem is.
She's got points. And she's got the code to do it. She's, she's, she's a, she's a New Yorker at heart. And, you know, I, I honestly think that she's sad that Dad left.
I don't think you could prove that.
We, we never found him, that's true. I mean, people make jokes about prison pen pals.
But it's not a joke.
It's not a joke. People can, can meet and all love and marry.
J.P. Through J.P.
Through J.P.
J.P., yup.
And that's what we, that was our story.
Yes, I was, um, I had a really rough start in life and got kind of caught up in illegal activities.
Yup.
And I found myself in jail.
But some people do.
You know? Um, I was there for a couple of years. I was a little lonely.
Five to ten.
Yeah, it was counting.
Yeah.
And then, um, just started emailing from the library computer. I didn't have anything illegal.
She, she emailed me.
Yes, yes.
It was quite innocent. She was proposing a business transaction, a business deal.
All you needed to do was give me money.
Credit card number.
And I would just email you. That's it.
And, uh, and it started, and that's where love blossomed.
Right, yes.
I have a few, I have a few other pen pals, too. We just, I could collect them, like, trophies.
Right, but I'm your favorite, right?
Yeah, and the state. Yeah, sure.
What?
The state pen's okay. I mean, you're the best in the state pen. But you can't compete with, you know, the big leagues.
What's the big leagues?
You know, State, New York, you know? Places in Pennsylvania.
Oh my gosh, they, I've heard about them. They're beautiful.
Oh my gosh, Ivy.
Ivy League in Penn State.
No, you should go.
Oh.
You can transfer.
My lights, yeah. Well?
You're a little, you're a little tired, then.
Right.
I am. I was up all night crunching numbers.
Oh, yeah.
They were all over the floor like Legos. And I got stepped on. I'm hurt like some bitch.
You really got, you really did think about getting some proper treatment?
Yeah, I, so many levels. I mean, when I got elected here to be, you know, the mayor of, what are we calling ourselves now? Booty Town?
Yeah, Booty Town.
Yeah. Whoever came up with that nickname for us, I, it's horrible. And now it's stuck.
Sold a lot of postcards.
You ready to start it?
But let's get that Town Council meeting going. We gotta start hearing some grievances from the people. Oh, Margaret again.
You guys is macho. You don't have to call me Margaret. Okay, so. As you well aware, my corgis got a little lot of hands. We got a, we got a corgi problem in this town. And they've got the cutest little booties. I mean, they're hopping like rabbits, alright? I still go by door and there's like six. And they're so damn cute, I've gotta take them all in. And now I've got shit as high as I need in my house, you know?
But they're so adorable.
They're so cute.
Problem. They're booty-licious.
I can't separate them. Why can't you separate them when they're so cute like that?
You can't.
I mean, we'll definitely take it under advisement. They're such a, they're, they're such a focal part of this town. I can't imagine them not being.
Yeah, well, I use some taxpayer money to help with this issue, okay? So.
Oh, you wanna pay for that?
So the paper, their brains.
Alright, Margie, we'll think about that.
Alright, thanks.
Alright. Yes, Ted.
Hey, Booty Town Council! Ted, what is Big Ted?
Yeah, it's Big Ted. You've got bigger.
The man spreader. And I've, uh, I've come up with the grievance lately regarding our Metro train. You know the Metro?
Yeah.
You ever take the Metro?
Yeah, I take the Metro.
All seven blocks.
There's only one armrest on your left side. You gonna do that?
Yeah, well, we know that. It's like the funding only allows for one.
Yeah, see, I never thought it was a problem before until I found myself next to another manspreader, okay? I was just in a two-hour standoff over that left armrest. I wasn't gonna yield. I wasn't gonna yield. On Big Ted.
Yeah, oh yeah.
On Big Ted. I've got that Big Ted in.
You're Big Ted.
My Big Ted Dan.
Big Ted dancing.
Big Ted dancing. The famous Big Ted dancers.
Same here in the show, yeah.
So anyways, I appreciate you listening. And let's, uh, let's think about another armrest.
Well, think about, you know, we'll think about it.
Wait, wait, I'm confused. Two left armrests?
Yes.
You want two left armrests, so I can...
When I spread, I spread to the left.
Okay. Alright, so we're not gonna worry about the right, then. Just left, guys. Thank you.
So some men spread to the left, some men spread to the right.
I had no idea that there was a direction.
I'm not a spreader, I just...
Oh, oh, no.
If I spread one, I'd spread another time! And I am like, weenie sewers! Stop throwing it and bucket down the window! I told you once, I told you twice, I've told you every week this one!
Cindy, we are not a big, huge metropolis. We can't afford sewers and any kind of drainage throughout the city. It was good enough for the prairie towns, it's good enough for Booty Town.
It is, yup.
It sticks and I'm stepping in it!
I wish we had thought of that before we set up the Metro train, but now we're kind of stuck.
I did it above and below!
Are you throwing it out the window right now?
It's an elevated train!
Well, um, well, yeah. We can take it in our bikes. Yeah. We're gonna have to...
We gotta come up with some new solutions.
Alright, as your Town Council, take it under advisement.
I guess.
Hey, honey, I call this one the Jasmine.
I like it. I like it.
It's not the classic liquor. It's actually clay, you know? And I think it really embodies kind of our relationship. I wanna drown it in water.
Yes.
And see what happens.
Thanks, yeah. That's, that's exactly how I see our relationship. Yeah. And the basket looks like it's gasping for air.
Yeah, you see the bubbles coming up?
Yes. And yeah, in deep town, I can see it's hoping that it runs out of air. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you got that diddled on, huh?
Yeah, you know, I just saw the last bubble pop.
Oh, um...
I want a divorce.
Can we go back to the bath? That metaphor, that felt a little, um, what's the word? Cheaper.
Uh, cheaper?
Yeah, 'cause see, if we just stay in the baskets and we don't actually use divorce, then I don't have to use the numbers to figure out how much you owe.
Oh, that I owe you, okay.
Yeah, 'cause remember, I, remember? You were just on the, on the TV earlier talking about how I don't have a job?
Yeah, you know? I remember one of our friends from college and his mom was Judge Judy. So I'm kind of thinking, maybe we could take it to Judge Judy?
You wanna take this to court, seriously?
She seems pretty affordable.
Really? I don't know. I've seen your underwater basket weaving salary, and it's not six feet.
You're right, it's seven. I know.
Yeah, that's because of the desk, I mean.
I met someone today, Mom. A girl. You'd like her.
Mmm. Because that's a assertion you can't necessarily prove.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like you to consider that I'm a, I'm a man now.
Mmm. I don't know. What qualifications do you have to actually claim that you're a man?
Your Honor, on my birth certificate, it lists me as male. And I'm a twenty-three.
That don't make you grown.
Okay. Your Honor, I, uh, I, I, I just, I've got feelings, Mom. You gotta let me go. You gotta let me go.
Okay.
All my brothers are successful and living on their own. You know, I just...
It's different for the girl in the family. For Stephanie. I know, I know it's not...
My friends call me P, Mom. They call me P!
It's not your legal name.
I know, I know, but that's just, I, you know... I want you to let me be who I am.
Well, I wanna know more. I wanna know more about this girl.
Okay, she's a lawyer.
Interesting.
Yeah. Her name is Eric.
Eric?
Yeah. Her dad, I'm in a war. He had three girls and the last one he named Eric. We have a lot in common. A lot in common. She gets me. She's the first person in my life who understands me. I know you just want us, you need someone to push around.
I know Eric. Eric Mathis.
Yeah.
Son of Judge Mathis.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
How are you?
I've been doing great. You're looking well.
Yeah, I haven't seen you combine in like so long.
I, I've been busy.
But man, I've been counting down the days. It's been like fifteen days.
You've been marking it off on the wall?
Yes, I have. There's a little notch, a notch.
Oh my gosh, that, oh my God, that just makes my heart grow. That's, that's so wonderful. Are you getting everything I sent you?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I dug through the cake as you instructed. And I got it.
Yeah, the cream filling?
Yes. It was so great.
They don't always want that in the...
I know, I know, I know. You know, it was so delicious. I loved it so much. And I just like, I love you.
Oh, I love you.
Oh, by the way, I get out in like two days. Two days! Are you, I know you're excited. We can start our life together. We're gonna be together forever.
Two days?
Two days, yeah, yeah. I mean, everything we've talked about for the last ten years, how you're gonna come pick me up in your car...
You killed three men.
Alright.
Real cases, real people, Judge Judy!
That was fire, Judge. Thanks for joining me in the intro. Alright. Plague has been sworn in. Your defendant is not around yet.
Not yet.
So we will give a few minutes...
That's minus five points.
Alright, why don't you go ahead and start a plague just since the defendant is not here? We're gonna do things a little differently.
Well, I had originally gone in to buy a car with my roommate, Jess. We both agreed that we were gonna go half and half on the car.
Don't talk to me, sir, I'm just the bailiff. This is the judge.
Now, which half?
Don't disturb him.
Wait, wait, shh.
I'm so pissed.
You shut your mouth when I'm talking. Which half? Front half? Back half? Right side? Left side?
Says you, Judge, judge, bottom half. I got the bottom half, they got the top half.
Half of the wheels for a smart ass.
I'm so sorry I'm late. That cocky, this shit car broke down.
I was five minutes from winning this case.
I'm sorry. Here, present, sorry, Your Honor. I'm so sorry. Please sit. You see this battery? Battery?
Okay, hey, settle, settle.
I'm gonna give you a vote of minus one.
That's bad. That is bad. Just letting you know.
Do you know this is scored?
Oh. I know there was like a rule.
Well, now we also have a feature where they can phone in from home and vote. It's been different, so...
Well, I would've done that. I walked here. Okay, I'm sorry, alright. I don't know the rules.
Talk about work to be here, I, this seems kinda frivolous.
Mom, 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 can we call about it? I want the guy with the top cap to win.
Yes, yes, I love him. He's cute, he's cute.
What, nine hundred, nine? Yeah, okay, got it.
Poles are blown.
Oh my gosh.
Judge?
I have you plus two.
What? This is not like a spare for justice for me. I, okay, Your Honor, can I please plead my case? I'm pissed at you, alright? We went in fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty?
And we pulled...
Actually, hold on, commercial breaks. And after crack, go, go.
Okay, that's what, that's what happened.
Oh, my sweet little, the boot staw! Another just cute little corgi. See what I mean?
I know, I know you love your corgis and, and she's beautiful. Look at her, look at the little booties and everything.
I need to help with all of her poop. It's, it's everywhere.
Well...
She's pregnant right now with another litter and I don't know what I'm gonna do. But she's just so cute, look at that poop.
The problem is, we can't tell the difference between her poop and the rest of the town's poop.
I know, I know, I know, it's quite...
Wait, 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 what's going on here? Eddie?
Hey, 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 turn it off, turn it off! No, she's not, well, turn it off, no, whatever, come at it.
You sure? You sure about this?
You know, I, love makes love makes babies and I'm so lonely. I'm so lonely.
You do realize more dogs means more dog crap, right?
I... Come on, man!
Oh, did you enjoy the scenery? This, I love it when they put the Metro in, you know? Uh, you work in the city, I bet, right? You work that down? With you, you counting or something?
Nugget, Eric, can I check your tickets?
I'm free.
It's big, they're cute. You okay?
Uh-huh.
What about, uh, the one stuck over there? Can I check your ticket? Thank you. Alright.
Can you help me?
Uh, yeah, yeah, the next stop's in about twenty minutes.
Oh my God!
Excuse me. Alright, so after work, you know, they've got to look happy hour so for it, you know?
I don't even know your name!
I am Big Ted Dancing. I need no introduction, man. And you should be so lucky to join me for happy hour after work. You know?
I get pregnant from this?
What about for Stephanie, okay? That loser's not a lawyer. And, oh, hey, guys.
Oh, no.
Oh, hey, Persephone.
Yeah, it's all my brothers. Yeah, Mom's cooking dinner tonight.
I didn't get the Thanksgiving invite.
Uh, she's in, um... You know, it's probably, you didn't read all the fine print in the legal documentation of the invitation.
Did you check the box to actually subscribe via email? I mean, I don't know if you could even...
I don't know if you could decipher it.
This teasing has gone on long enough. I wanna show you something. That's an acceptance letter. Is it Debride University?
Debride?
Debride Law School?
Debride?
I don't care.
Yo, I'm gonna be a lawyer. Uh-huh, uh-huh. I bet you.
Two.
Eric's someone?
Eric, yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't know, bud.
Oh, wonderful. Oh! Eric Mathis. Eric Mathis.
Well, that's not somebody, that's just Eric.
Does Mom know about this?
Right.
She's in denial.
What's this about me? Hey, Mom?
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 Mom? Hey, Mom, bum. That's my mom. Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Dear Johnny, this is your long-lost lover from upstate New York. You haven't written in a while. And I was just hoping you'd send some money again. I really need to get some toilet paper. They don't believe in sewers in this town. Love locked up.
Oh, here.
I read that.
I can't hide it from you. She's everything I've always wanted in a prison. Wait, I guess you're out of prison, not high. She's everything I've ever wanted. She's, she's real New England penitentiary material.
You know? I have a little secret for you.
You can tell me.
She's my lover, too. You think you're the only one that doesn't have a lover? I have fifteen.
Dear my little scrum-diddly-um-shes, you recently got out of prison and I miss your scent in myself.
Yup.
I sure wonder what happened to my accent. I really wish you were here right now. Your Southerness has left an imprint in me deep as I can...
In your last letter, you called me Billy.
Yes. You're not...
I'm Jacob.
Oh, Jacob, oh, yes, you...
That's really, it really hurts, okay?
You were my...
Are there other inmates that you write letters to?
Not at all. Not at all. You were my true love.
Do you have any idea what it's like to get shanked one day? And then get a letter in the mail that says, Jimmy? You got two minutes left, two minutes, two minutes left, okay?
Oh, two minutes left.
Jimmy's my brother. You're not, you're not, you're not writing?
Oh, no. But I love you both.
I, I...
Can we...
When I started accepting...
From the dilly-dooches. Yes.
What the hell? What the hell? What the hell? You knew.
Okay, I am a one-pen pal man.
What?
This is crazy, yes.
Nobody's a one-pen pal man!
I am loyal to a false, and this shit doesn't work for me. Yeah, here, she can't hear us a little bit, okay?
No, what?
Okay.
Speak!
You have to chew! Excuse me, excuse me.
Officer.
She can't hear you!
You know I don't appreciate it when you call me officer. As your father, I know, Eric, that you need to stop all of this. Yes, I've heard about Persephone. I've heard about all your letters and all that. Eric, you need to pick one. If you want out of it, you need to pick one.
One?
One, and I think Persephone is that one. And that's hard for me to say, okay? Do you think I want my son with that girl? It's tough. But compared to all the others, I think that's your choice.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, give me my time.
I'm really confused.
Sorry.
What is happening?
There are so many men.
Well, that's, wait, wait, put Judge Mathis back on. Well, that's, please, please, put Judge Mathis back on. How are you gonna breathe?
Ladies and gentlemen, the honorable Judge Mathis. Here you go, Judge. Hey, I'd like to check on the people I put in. Our Judge Judy. With all the goings on about prison, people have forgotten that we throw our raw sewage out in the street.
I saw in one of those, uh, for these commercials that you can go nose fly. And I think that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I mean, it just sort of just melted.
Incoming!
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. God. You know, they say that the old prairie adds raw sewage to the street all the time, but it doesn't make it any better.
Guess what I'd get? If a bear can shit in the woods, why can't I just dump my raw sewage down to the street?
I feel like there's a good answer to that question that's not being said. And that was the question Booty Town was founded on. If a bear can take a shit in the forest, why can't I? And so are founders. The honorable Jebediah Booty and his lovely wife. Miss Booty. That's giving her cause of conjunctivitis. She originally died of conjunctivitis. Any type of bacterial. And walked in Miss New Booty. And the rest was history in Booty Town.
Has this ever happened to you? You've been walking down the street and you get sewage in your eye. Here at Johnson &amp; Johnson, we've come up with a solution. We have something that's a little spray called Pig Eye No-More. One spray. And you can, see? Judge Judy is a very big sponsor of our, uh, wha-, uh, whatever this spray is.
It's not a scent?
Oh, it is fresh pine. It kinda smells like wheat.
Hit of that? Holy. Fresh as on Christmas Day. I can see it, I'm high as fuck. So, Betty.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was getting, I just, I brought it, I'd like, I'd like to pull the seat up for you.
Okay.
Don't rain on me.
You're just standing there and seeing.
Listen, I was, I wanted to introduce you to my mom.
I have been waiting for this.
Okay?
Yes, I've heard so much about her.
But I checked the mail today.
What?
Is there anything you wanna tell me?
Absolutely nothing.
Eric.
Okay. Yes. I do have a little problem writing pen pals.
You wish I was a bad boy.
I do. I, I mean, just, just one little kick in the butt, in Booty, Booty's butt, just take it.
You have any idea what would happen if I tried that with my mom?
She would love it. Well, that's true.
I don't think she'd love it. No, you do not know my mom.
I know, I know, I know. I would love it. I would love it so much.
Yes.
But she would, you're right, you're right. What if you, I don't know. Spit on the ground. That's bad. Yeah, that's bad. It's gonna get me, I'm fucking going. Come on, just, just one tiny spit.
That's what cellophane do.
That's what bad boys do. Bad boys are so bad when they spit on the ground.
Hey, boy, you better not be spitting on my raw sewage.
Oh, see? Look, see? See?
Old man, old man for others?
Yes.
That's it. I know you're, I know how offended you get by, by spit. And I have a. Boy, you know what a pure town is? This is a pure town. And I don't mean that in any kind of disgusting racial sense. I'm saying it's full of raw sewage.
Yes.
It's pure, just like New York. It's what God gave your body and what you give back to the earth. You're gonna defile that with your spit. Yes. I didn't want to.
Just defile it. It just is asking for your defiling.
Whoa. Oh, my boy.
I love you.
No, that's a love. That's it. We're coming to war. But this is what happens to me.
We love each other.
Oh my gosh, oh. Mister Commander, you gotta, you have to believe in love, sir.
Believe in love?
My heart is breaking. It's so beautiful. I didn't know that we have this sort of beauty in this town. I'll let you spit on the ground. You spit on that ground. You spit on that ground for love.
All day, every day. All day, every day.
For love.
For love. Oh, yes.
Judge, Your Honor, I'm gonna call you Judy. I know. What are we gonna do about our kids? I don't, I really, I want them to be together, but you're, um.
I honestly have so many, I.
No, I, I get that, but you're, you're, um, you're daughter-son? I don't know if she needs the best fit for my son-daughter.
Aren't you saying my daughter-son isn't good enough?
For my son-daughter? Yes, that's what I'm saying, yes. Maybe for someone else's son-daughter, but not mine.
I just, do you talk about everybody's son-daughter this way? You know, your daughter-son isn't anything to write home about either.
Don't you dare.
And you know all about writing home, mister, you were randomly in prison.
Hey, you know, I gotta work on my penmanship sometimes. It's a great place to do it, but that's a whole nother story. I'm concerned, I don't think your, your son-daughter is.
Excuse me, my daughter-son.
Excuse me, your daughter-son. I don't think your daughter-son is tough enough for my son-daughter.
Oh my god. You're one of these traditional.
Would you guys stop fighting? You know, it's twenty twenty-three and these gender labels really aren't necessary.
So, what, what are you, what are you saying, random person? Your child and your child are both good enough.
Yes, just not for each other. Oh, yeah, not for each other, that's wrong.
They're horrible, not true, yeah.
See, even random guy knows. But, but we just have to agree on who's the problem. As long as we agree that it's your offspring that's the problem, see? Just offspring.
Babe, our families have broken into war.
I know.
The Mathises versus the Sh-
The.
The Shilingers.
Shilins.
Shilins.
The Shilins.
I forget my name.
It's gonna go down in history.
I know, but our love is tearing apart families. This town was built on law and the legal system between the two most powerful lawyers in the world.
Correction, this town was built on raw sewage.
This town, this towns are built on many things.
I know, right, yes, yes.
I don't think there's any way we compete again.
No, we have to be together.
But we can't.
What do we do?
Well, daughter, not son-daughter, we need to get the muskets ready. It's war.
Oh.
Yes. The Shilin-uh, yeah, caused, they've declared war. And we are gonna defend your brother, sister, Eric. The muskets need to be ready.
Okay, okay. You know?
Why are you doing muskets?
That's something to do with the history of the town. Was founded on muskets and therefore we continue to use muskets in our battle.
Got it, got it.
But either way, you know, that's your, that's your dad and that's your, that's your, that's your brother.
Slurpings of math.
Okay, listen, this is not what I want.
Let me, okay, I will.
Okay, you'll, you'll solve this?
Yes, I'm gonna solve this.
Alright, guys, here's our muskets. You only get one shot and it takes at least forty-five minutes to reload.
Alright, so I'm kinda like the dumb brother and I'm really not sure about the assignment of what we're shooting, necessarily. Hey, guys, you're not shooting anything. What you're gonna do is just shoot love into the air. We built this shitty.
Town Council, everybody! Thank you so much. So happy to be here, mind the inconvenience. We'll be back Saturday night.
Dance a lot!